Hey, everybody. Welcome and we are back. Uh, next up, we're gonna go ahead, move into the WSU extension. Hello Heidi. No, you're not Heidi. We're gonna, there she is. I was saying, we're gonna have to get these things right on the, on, on my agendas. I keep calling the wrong people.
Hi.
Hi.
How are you doing today?
Incredible. Welcome.
Good. Okay, good. Well, I'll make this pretty quick. Um, I am just briefing you on one item today. Um, this is for an amendment to an interagency agreement that we have with Washington State Department of Agriculture. This interagency agreement helps to fund our not weed survey and control work. This will be amendment number two to contract number K three, five, four, seven. Um, this will have no impact to the current budget. We previously had $4,000 budgeted for contracted services. And I will not be contracted services. And so I've amended the grant to add $1,400 into our supplies, equipment and travel. And then add the remaining $2,475 into our salary and wages. Um, and this will help to fund some purchases of equipment that are needed for our not weed work and also increase um staff time that can be spent on not weed survey and control. Uh, so yes, I am just requesting that this gets added to the action agenda for signature and approval. And I'm happy to answer any questions on this.
Commissioners, any questions or if you're ready to go, just say so.
It is all good with me.
All good with me as well.
There you go, Heidi.
Okay, thank you very much.
Hey Heidi, before you leave.
Yes.
Um, quick question. So if people do have noxious weeds on their property or they see noxious weeds on their neighbor's property, um, do they, how do they report that? How do they get a hold of you or you know, what, what are the steps?
Yes, so we have a general noxious weeds email um, that people can send reports to and that's listed on our webpage for WSU Extension. It's also listed on the, the county website as well. And then, so they can email or they can call in to report things directly, but usually things come through to our weeds emails.
Gotcha. Okay.
And not all the noxious weeds require control. We're always happy to do site visits and educate people on any of the noxious weeds. Um, but they don't all require control in the county. And so how we handle those reports depends on the, the noxious weed that's reported.
Alright, that's perfect.
Yeah. Alright, thank you.
Yeah, Mark, go ahead.
Oh, yes, Mark.
Yep, so just real quick, if, if individuals go onto our homepage, um, they click on departments, then click on WSU Extension. And then you'll see a, a tag for the Mason County Noxious Weed Control Program. And that's where they could find the information. So have to go to WSU Extension first, then Noxious Weeds.
Great.
So Dan, you popped on. Is there something you wanted to say?
Nope, just incredibly supportive of my staff and I just love our partnership. So thank you and great job, Heidi.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys. Have a great day.
Yeah, you too.
Yep, we're gonna go ahead, move on to Indian Defense and Sheriff's Office, Peter Jones and Jason Drack.
Morning, Peter. You wanna go first? You want me to?
Well, I'm, uh, Jen helped us prepare this. I believe this is a supplemental uh, budget increase. And basically for me, this is just um, a while back, we increased the payment rates for uh, essentially everyone, investigators, Superior Court, District Court. Uh, we did figure that into this year's budget and so we need to put the money there because we've already paid out a lot of it. Um, and we've, we've had that rate increase up essentially since January or February and we need to adjust the budget to deal with that. Now that we're this far in the year, we have a pretty good idea of, of where that is.
Questions uh, for Peter Jones?
Not for me.
None for me. And if Jen says it's good to go, then I would say, assume that it's good to go.
Okay, Jack, what you got?
So, uh, just taking over some of the budget stuff here recently and discovered that we were like a hundred thousand in the hole on uh, jail operation costs. Started digging through that and found out that uh, we didn't uh, have a lock, specific line or funding source for Nisqually Jail. Um, so we've been paying it out of our existing operational costs. Uh, yeah, we've got budget capacity inside of wage and benefits to cover uh, better part of it for the remainder of, or for this year through the remainder of the year. That's why I'm asking for about a million dollars to be transferred out of wage and benefit side on the jail um, to be pushed into the operation side. And then to cover our ongoing cost, operational, continuing operational costs and to include just the basic stuff in the jail and um, the uh, expected costs of Nisqually. Uh, looking for about 300,000 for a budget amendment.
So Chief, I wanna make clear for myself to be supportive, and I am supportive. I need to make sure that we have an understanding that this is used specifically for this and this is not just a, a a free shift of funds that can be used however it wants. Over to the other side. In the past, that was before you were chief or anything else, that did happen a lot.
I've always been, I've always been honest with you and I'm gonna do everything I can to make sure that's exactly what happens.
I believe you.
I don't have spending spree.
I believe you, Chief. So I'm supportive. Commissioners?
I am as well.
No spending spree? There's so much we can do with $300,000.
Oh, stop.
No, I support it 100%. And would you please um, tell people to quit doing their crimes on Lynch Road? Getting tired of flashing lights.
Yeah, okay.
So Jennifer, I see. I see you pop down here, Jennifer. Uh, is there something you'd like to talk to us about regarding these issues?
No, I, I just wanted to be here for um, for support since I helped write it and um, and I'm hoping that we don't have to use all, all of it, but I don't want to get us in a pickle where we don't have enough budget authority. So um, so I would recommend approving all three of the uh, requested action items.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And then so we can put this on the next agenda?
Yeah, we have plenty of time.
Yeah. Okay.
Alright, Commissioners, anything for uh, Peter or uh, Chief Drack? Here and none. Thank you, guys. Have a great day.
Thank you.
Okay, next up, we have uh, Community Development. Tell Ron.
Morning.
Morning.
Okay, oh, I lost my little cheat sheet. Okay. I have a couple of things and then Marissa, um, time for another all-day, all-staff meeting in DCD. We picked Thursday, October 31st, happens to be Halloween. Uh, and there's a draft agenda, so we'll just close for the day um, and do onsite here in Building Eight. Um, the morning will be spent with the entire group together and then the afternoon, there's some breakout groups and then with the um, some crossover and uh, the groups on their own. For um, a variety of training issues. Any questions on that?
I see none.
Okay. Great.
And then the other is a um, request to uh, put on the action agenda for next Tuesday um, October 8th to set a public hearing for November for a rezone of 325 acres. Um, it's rezoning from Rural Residential 10 to Rural Residential 5 and it does impact one parcel out of, there are 64 total parcels. Um, one of them is 10 acres in size, the rest are all five acres and under. So the majority of the parcels will not have an increase in density um, with the exception of the one parcel. So it does clean up um, the uh, zoning, um, but it doesn't really change that much.
So your request is to put on the October 8th agenda, uh, the announcement for a public hearing on November 5th?
Correct.
Okay. Any questions or comments, Commissioners?
No, sounds good.
Okay, next. Oh, wait. Hi, Marissa.
Hi. Uh, good morning Commissioners. Uh, Kel, were you done?
Yep.
Yep.
Sorry. Uh, just wanna make sure. Um, so the first item I have for you is our annual capital improvement program. And this is for the 2025 to 2030 cycle. Um, not asking for any action at this meeting, just wanted to update you to kind of coincide with Jen's budget um, briefings and process. And um, so the PAC reviewed the capital improvement program a little bit differently this year. We tried a, a pilot program, if you could say, um, and the PAC formed a subcommittee. Um, and then this allowed them to have um, more time to review um, the capital improvement program projects that the departments were providing. And also to have a little bit more time to have some one-on-one discussions with the different departments as well. Um, so we, we started that process this year, see how it went. And the outcome of that was um, having that subcommittee provide topics for a recommendation letter to the Board of County Commissioners. And I included that within this packet too. And trying to get this process done earlier in the year before the, before the budget process, so we can get that recommendation letter um, to the PAC, we, or not sorry, the PAC, to you guys, to the board um, before you make any decisions on the budget. Um, they are recommending the draft CIP as is, um, but they do have a recommendation letter um, for plans going forward and um, just wanted to get that to you guys before the budget process and I'll be coming back later to set a hearing that coincides with the um, the 2025 budget as well.
How do you see it implementing the recommendations?
Um, so a lot of the recommendations um, are for future so future CIPs and some of it relates to system plans, recommendations for having more system plans. Cause of course those inform our CIP. Um, some of these um, some of these recommendations, you know, I think are gonna take more time. They're not gonna, they're not gonna happen in the next cycle. Um, but um, so there was a recommendation for drafting system plans, new system plans or updating existing ones. Um, there was a recommendation that the CIP follow um, Commerce Guidance. Um, we do follow Commerce, Commerce's guidance, their guidebook guidance, um, but we follow it um, on the scale of uh, a smaller county, you know, with a smaller staff and dedicated to, to working on it. Um, I think, I think our CIP is getting better. Um, so, um, and then there was some recommendations, which I think we could actually put in place um, next cycle. And that was they're, they're wanting to have a more detailed description for projects in the, in the first two years of that um, six-year plan. Um, you know, I, I think that could be an easier one to accomplish sooner um, than some of those other recommendations.
But they can still keep it vague enough to keep things in the, the, the program. So it could be, uh, we could seek, seek uh, funding and stuff in the future?
Yes.
Yeah.
And that's all I got. I just wanted to get this out to you early, so you guys can have a look at it before um, budget.
Did each department come through?
Yes, yes. Each department, yes, very responsive.
Good.
Great work.
You remember how that was, right Kevin?
You do.
Okay, uh, anything from Marissa?
Marissa, um, where can I find the Commerce Guidance on CIPs that you referenced?
Um, it's on, it's on their website. Um, I could provide a link. It's, it's kind of hard to find sometimes. Um, it is on their, on the Commerce website, under their Capital Improvement Program section. It's way down at the bottom. Um, it's kind of an older guide, but um, it's, it's still on there. It should, it should still be on there.
Yeah, if you have a link, that'd be super helpful.
Yeah, I can send that out.
Thank you.
Yes.
Hey, do you have anything else for, oh, Mark, go ahead.
Thanks, Commissioner. I was, uh, Marissa, so when they say system, develop system plans, can you help me understand what a system plan is? Or did they provide any documentation associated with a, um?
They're talking about like, you know, the North Bay Sewer System, like a system, general sewer system plan. Uh, um, water, any, if we don't have waters, a water system plan for one of our systems, creating one of those or updating the existing one to be as current as possible.
Okay. So I, I know that there's some, I mean, I'm trying to think back on some projects that we've listed out there. And I know that uh, this probably could be talked much more detail uh, by Public Works folks, but you know, we, there was funding that we were looking for uh, to do a capital facility plan uh, where we actually had professionals come in, kind of assess the health of our individual utilities that we had. Uh, if we had updated ones to that, that would be great, but they cost money to do that. Um, I also saw in here like county administrative buildings. And so I'm, I'm just, I'm trying to figure out what a, what a system plan, what is the expectation for a system plan on a county administrative building? I, the utilities, I kinda get that's
Mm-hmm.
I mean, it's, it's like, okay, here's our service area. Here's potential growth in capacity. Here's the um, the health of our individual components of that utility and kind of major things that we're gonna have to do to it in certain years. Um, and, and I, and I could kinda get that for an county administrative building to a certain degree, like when do we have to replace a roof or potentially replace it? But, but a lot of that is, is historically just been deferred maintenance that um, we don't do until the roof starts leaking and then we address it. Or we don't address the HVAC system until the HVAC system doesn't work anymore and then we address it. And so those are I'm just trying to kinda get my mind wrapped around about the level of detail that the individuals would like to have regarding our administrative buildings.
Well, Mark, one of the things that uh, in past conversations is, for example, like the, the North Mason building that we have up there, what, what are our designs for the future that we're actually open to do? Because those all have a cost. The same thing, if we're gonna move the auditor to someplace and, or something else, uh, we'd like to know the cost of that, so they can plan for the future. I'm not saying that it's easier, we're gonna even be able to pull it off. I just know that was the conversation that I had with uh, at least one of them in the past.
Oh, okay. Okay. Yeah, so I guess it, it, yeah, it's, it's a, it's a matter of just documenting the potential projects that are out there with at least what we know today, right? So I kind of talk about a the, the one that you just brought up that, that came into mind, Randy, was something I had a conversation with our, our county auditor about. Um, in terms of the, the, for years now, you know, they've been looking for uh, an opportunity create, to, to create an election voting center or an election operations center. Um, and so looking at, there, there's tons of different options that are potentially available for how we could move forward with that. But if, what I could possibly do in terms of planning is document the general the general requirements associated with what they're looking for, in terms of square footage space, in terms of security and access to the, to the, our networks and, and um, from a location standpoint, a centralized location associated with our population. We could, we can look at, I could document some of those things, but in terms of coming up with an estimated cost of that, it's very different if I, if I actually um, go out and, and purchase something, or if I utilize potential space that we have in a county facility. Um, so I, I, I don't have a specific plan of how we could move forward on that, but I think what you're telling me, Marissa, is that they're wanting us to just, in general, document that that this is something that we're looking for in the future?
Yes, I, I, well, I know on previous discussions with, I, I do believe the particular person who made that recommendation that um, the county's buildings need, uh, space needs assessment is a little outdated. So um, and they had, they had mentioned that information had continually rolled over into our capital facilities element. And, and it was a little frustrated with that because it really didn't um, show how anything had changed space, space needs wise over the next few years. Um, I, he, I don't know that he particularly told me to what detail um, with our county and administrative buildings that he desired. Um, I might have to have a follow-up conversation with him about that.
That would be perfect, yeah. I just kinda wanna make sure that I understand what, what are, 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 are planning commissions expectations are. And then I, and then I'd like to kinda give them a, a response to some of those expectations, right? So can I, can I, is it realistic for them to um, expect to receive this additional level of documentation or specific detail associated with this um, in 2025 or '06? Or, or is this something that we're gonna continually work at now? Updating our capital facility needs for the county as a whole, in terms of our operations and where we need to work, that, that, that I think is pretty, definitely should be done. I can, I can hear that recommendation and, and understand that we should be um, updating that information on an annual basis to say, here's where we're growing or hey, we gotta, we got an additional building to put our public health department in. And so it's created space here. Um, so I, I, I get some of those details, but just kinda wanted to understand what was that level of detail in terms of expectation of cost. And in general, I can talk about things, but until we actually get funding to go do a project, then I, I, I typically don't have architectural and engineering estimates associated with those projects. And the numbers that I put in there are um, I, I would say maybe informed um, estimates? So not a professional estimate.
Well, I understand, Mark. So some, some of the things they're hoping they're looking for is that, that they can actually plan better based on the information they have. But they have to remember that the real reason behind all that is to make sure that it's just covered in the, in a comprehensive plan so that uh, we can actually move forward with the project. We can't move forward with the project if it's not in the plan. So they'd like to dial down and, and I get that, but some of it, they're not gonna be able to. Uh, that was the, why it was interesting. I, I saw it as a realistic thing to be more dialed down, the things that are gonna be in the next two years. That makes sense because
Yeah.
should be the things that are actually coming forward. Uh, where this particular document, uh, I've been involved with it for years and I was ever commissioner, is quite often not appreciated and not given the level of work that's necessary to uh, let people actually plan. It becomes a rubber stamp thing instead. And I think they're asking for, for more ability to have uh, work and understanding within it, cause they think they're proving something that's gonna have funding attached to it where you know, you and I both know that in the future, it doesn't work that way. But those first two years, it makes sense.
And, and, and I can tell you that the, the recommendations and the discussions that they had with staff and, and myself um, really made us look at it again uh, from a different level or a different perspective and, and saw where they were um, where they had concerns. And I feel like we did make some positive changes to the data that was there. Um, and definitely are now looking at uh, making sure that we, our information is consistent, right? So as we look at those projects that are gonna be in '25 or '26, making sure that our budget matches up to that, so it follows through and, and flows well. Um, so I, I definitely appreciate the, the work that they did there and I appreciate the recommendations that they have. And just wanted to make sure that I kind of understood, or at least established with that group, uh, realistic expectations for how we could move forward and, and make, continue to improve that information.
Hey, does anybody have anything else for uh, Marissa? Thank you, Marissa. Well done.
Okay.
As always, you are actually, you're a shining star. I tell you, every time we deal with you, I, I'm always more and more impressed.
Thank you. One more one more thing for you guys. Um, so we're in the middle of the comprehensive plan update. And I have been having meetings with my, our consultant for that. And we are at the point where um, we need to decide how we're going to bring um, each of the elements of the comprehensive plan to you guys. And I really just wanted to get a feel of how you wanted it brought forward, whether you wanted it, each element brought forward after the PAC um, goes through, it makes a recommendation, or do you want the full comprehensive um, plan, all the elements that we're working on in this review at, when we're at the kind of gone through all of them?
You know, Marissa, you are one of the best that I've worked with on putting together presentations in a manner that we do understand them. I would actually weigh heavily on what, the way you best think that uh, we should be taking in the information. Like I said, you're exceptional at that. Of all the things that, that you do, I think that's where you shine the highest. Commissioner uh, uh, Trask, what do you think?
Yeah, no, I'm good, I'm good with, with whatever you feel is, is best, as far as the presentation goes. You, I agree with Commissioner Netherlands. You, you, you present things in a way that, that is completely understandable for, to me. And so um, if, if you wanna do it in chunks, if you wanna do it all together, then I'm, I'm good with either way.
Commissioner Shute?
Yeah, I'm, I'm good with that. Marissa, maybe, can you just kind of give us a little bit of an overview of where we're at in the process and how things are tracking?
Um, so we are at the point, we're having a meeting on the 7th to finalize the countywide planning policies as well as our housing needs allocations. We need those housing needs allocations to, you know, finish a lot of work and, and the capital facilities element, transportation utilities. Um, so I'm hoping after October 7th, that when we get the planning policy, planning, countywide planning policies um, nailed down, that we would be bringing those to you guys for those to be adopted um, before we go on with the other elements. Um, our consultants have already been working in the background on transportation utilities and capital facility element. Um, they, the plan that was given to me still shows that we would have a draft by June. Um, but we have a lot of new things this year in regard to housing and uh, the climate element, which is completely new territory. Um, so a, a lot of work, but we may be, we may be upping our amount of meetings during the month to try to kind of push this stuff along.
Yeah, no, I, I remember those, those days from uh, when I was on the planning commission. I know when we did the SMP update and then it got into the comp plan, we were meeting, we were meeting twice a month. Um, it is a big lift. So there are things that, there are things that we can do um, to help kind of, you know, support that or support kind of the progress. Um, if it's helpful to you to, to bring us in earlier on different elements, just to kind of clear the deck on things and keep them focused. I think that probably would be a priority for me. Um, you know, so I, I, I would just kind of defer to you though, to, to kind of recognize what the, you know, how the pace is going and if we can help speed that up, I'm all for that.
Okay.
Alright, anything else for Marissa or for Kel? Kel, you have anything else for us?
I do not.
Hey, have a great day, everybody.
Thank you.
Next up, I have Public Health, Dave Wyndham. Morning, Dave.
Good morning Commissioners. So this morning, I am going to jump right over to Melissa and start a discussion around community lifeline.
Good morning Commissioners.
Morning.
Dave mentioned, so if this is just in response to the Commissioners' request to have a briefing on community lifeline, I know that uh, the Board Chair, Erin Martinash uh, was also invited and I do see her on the briefing. Um, so I think my question would be to the board first. I'm happy to provide, I provided a little bit of a background um, that I can kind of fill in a little bit more gaps on. If you would like a summary or if you want to have a little question and answer with Erin, um, just to speak to some of the concerns that have been brought up over the last few weeks.
Uh, before we do that, I'd rather you go ahead and tell us some of the things you're thinking first and then we can talk to her about it at the end.
Okay, perfect. Happy to.
Okay.
Um, so as you know, community lifeline operates the only emergency shelter serving single adults in our community. Um, although there has been widespread community concern regarding a number of potential issues, I can only speak to what we contract with the agency for, um, which is to fund 2.0 FTE in overnight shelter staff. Um, as well as only speaking to the funding source that we provide for them, which is the lo, the local document recording fees. So anything else, I think Erin will probably have to fill in the gaps on. So anything else, I think Erin will probably have to fill in the gaps on, um, in terms of funding and other, um, contracts that they have. Uh, so with that being said, again, I'll just provide an information only brief summary on kind of where we are, the work that public health has done, um, over the years. Um, little bit of background, you may recall, Community Lifeline is currently on reduced funding status uh, for failure to implement corrective action and quality improvement for mostly financial, um, ongoing financial and invoicing errors, I think over the last two, three years. Um, in addition to that, we also had some concerns with, um, not operating in compliance with the scope of service outlined in the contract. That specifically being, um, not increasing the bed capacity despite having several contracts in place. Um, there was one during COVID, you know, for the sprinkler system, shelter program grant to increase those bed, those beds, um, from 35 to 54. Um, back in November, I think it was exactly November 7th, the board did approve of 20% reduction in funding, um, on Community Lifeline's remaining balance for the current program year, which is fiscal year 2325. Um, this follows a progressive action that's outlined in our written standards. The board has also adopted by resolution, um, the Mason County purchasing and contracting policy. We have followed that, um, particularly section 6.5, which is regarding subrecipient risk assessment and monitoring. Um, in all of the, the monitorings that we've done on a monthly basis for their invoicing and, um, program performance reporting. Um, while there is continued to be ongoing financial errors and compliance issues, we have recognized that this is a really critical service for this community. We certainly don't want to see a community without our adult shelter. So we developed a reallocation action plan, um, after the latest amendment was signed in November, reducing the funding. Um, it's attached to this packet. And we, it was really an opportunity for the agency to restore the funding that was lost. Um, and by doing that, really just ensuring that they, providing this technical assistance so that they can ensure that their shelter operations are brought into compliance with their contract, um, as well as continuing to support them with their financing errors, um, and really simplifying the process so that, um, there would be the less risk of making errors, um, and meeting with, with Erin kind of on a monthly basis, um, since then. Uh, we also provided some additional technical assistance for some ongoing concerns with bedbugs. Um, we aren't in a position as public health to really enforce things, so we've really provided education. Um, and connected them also to Choice, which I believe they did get a contract at the end of the year, um, to, 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 I think it was up to $25,000. Erin, you might have to correct me on that, um, for the mitigation and prevention of ongoing, um, issues with that. And we've kind of just checked in to see if there's any additional support and it didn't, hasn't appeared that there needed to be. Um, until last Wednesday, the 25th, uh, we hadn't received a single error-free invoice. Um, but I am happy to report that we did actually receive an error-free invoice as of last week. So we were able to approve that, um, for August without the need for any further corrections. So I think that's a positive thing looking forward, um, if Community Lifeline can maintain that. Um, and I think that's kind of a quick summary where we are currently. I'm happy to answer any further questions, but I do want to give Erin the opportunity, um, to speak to the board as well.
Yes. Uh, Commissioners, you have any questions of staff first before we, uh, open up for Erin? Okay, so Erin, welcome. Uh, we went ahead and got clearance to have you part of the conversation during brief. We don't normally do that a lot, so, uh, it's already been cleared for that, so welcome, uh.
Thank you.
Go ahead and begin. Yeah, if you had something you wanted to say first or?
Um, I, I am happy to answer questions. I'm, I was hoping that, um, um, today would be about, um, kind of the work plan that Angela, or not Angela, Melissa and I were working on together to get us back into compliance. Um, and that involves, um, our fire, um, a com, fire marshal inspecting and approving, um, the changes that we had made that, at the shelter. But, and I have a, a message into him, but he only works three days a week. So, um, I was hoping that he might be here too.
I know, I know we have a lot more questions than that, uh, but.
Go ahead with your questions.
Okay, Commissioners, uh, you want to start first, Commissioner Shute?
Sure, yeah. So Erin, first off, appreciate you being here with us this morning. Um, you know, I think as Melissa mentioned, uh, we do want to see Community Lifeline be successful and, and serve the population that, um, you know, that we help fund you to serve and make those, uh, improvements as, as they've come along. And unfortunately for you, I think there's, you know, you're, you're the one that has to be a part of this conversation today. But I, I think the, the issues are longstanding and, and somewhat systemic to the organization and, um, you know, I'll just speak from my own experience with, with some of the frustration that, that we've had when we hear um, about compliance issues and we hear about the, um, you know, being, uh, on corrective action for a year with, with the very little, um, change in how things are operating. Uh, it's frustrating for me and I think for our staff as well to continually ask for the same things over and over and over again and not, not really, not really have that message be received or have there be any changes to practice. And so that's, that's frustrating, um, from that perspective. But, you know, when we hear things in the community about, um, you know, kind of the state of the shelter from a cleanliness perspective and we hear things about, um, you know, staff being, you know, not paid or let go. Um, because of that, we hear about, um, you know, the, the access to, um, you know, illegal substances within, uh, within the shelter setting. Um, those are all things that raise our concern, I think, a little bit further. And so that's, that's kind of the reason that we're getting together today, I think. But, um, also, we have, we have worked really hard to provide funding to Community Lifeline because you are such a critical component of our, uh, homeless response program in the, in the community. And, um, I, I, I just don't know what else we can do to help Community Lifeline, um, short of, uh, you know, us having to go out and find another shelter provider to maybe come into the community and, 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 you know, take on that role and responsibility. And so I don't necessarily know that I have questions, interested to hear about the work plan that you've been working on. But, you know, at some point, we just need to have a functioning shelter that, that gets people, uh, you know, in, out of the elements, in particular during the winter, um, and then gets them through the coordinated entry process and, and ultimately housed in a more permanent situation. And so, um, I, I think that's, that's kind of where I'm at today.
Okay, what would be helpful for you to hear from me specifically in regard to your concerns and thoughts?
Well, I think I'd like to hear you address, um, first and foremost, the, the issue with homeless within the facility, access to illegal substances in the facility being, um, being essentially trafficked by, uh, staff or volunteers of the organization. Um, and then, and then just what is the, what is the plan to rectify those things? Um, as well as, you know, can you address the issue that we heard, we hear about with, with staff not being paid, being let go as a result of that?
Um, so let's start with the staff, um, being let go. The staff was let go because, um, well, the staff had been let go because of, um, inappropriate behavior toward, uh, guests in the past and then was rehired as a case manager. And so, um, let go not necessarily to do anything with finances, although we all know that finances are difficult there. Um, um, there was, um, angry, anger outburst from the staff as well as smoking, vaping inside the building, um, inappropriate interactions, rude interactions. So, um, that staff was let go in, in regard to things not having to do with finances. The finances are difficult and is a stressor. Um, so, and I will talk about them. Do you have any questions about the staff being let go? Do you want me to say something further about that?
No, no, and I, I, I appreciate that because I mean, there's always, I think, when you have situations like that, you know, having been on the employer side, I understand that what you oftentimes hear in the community isn't necessarily uh, the full truth of a situation. And so I, that's why I wanted to give you an opportunity to at least, um, you know, a, a, address sort of the, uh, you know, the insinuations that are happening in the community, in particular amongst the nonprofit community where, you know, this person is, is associated and things like that. So that there was an opportunity for, um, you know, the board's perspective on why there was a staffing change.
I decided to, um, since in Washington, right, we, we don't need to have cause. I, um, simply wrote him a letter, releasing him from employment, um.
So Erin, did you record and document any of the issues you're talking about and is this person still without pay?
Um, this person has been paid today. Um, um, so I think they received, uh, hopefully received an email and a phone call on Friday letting them know that their check was available, but hopefully they've received it today. Um, so.
But none of it was documented and was it, uh, true this person wasn't, was paycheck signed? And that's why they were upset? Because I also have Recovery Cafe and a few others that have said the same thing.
So yes, they were, I think they were paychecks behind. And that is why they were upset and discussion was about, um, professional demeanor in spite of our emotions. Um, so no, I did not record our conversation in any way. And that's why in the letter, it was not for cause.
Commissioner Trask, you have any questions?
Um, I guess a couple of questions for staff first. With the cares and the ARCA funds, I know that we, um, helped them do their showers, uh, sprinkler system. And then I believe we also helped with, um, the funding of the, uh, pipe to the city. For, so from the city service into the building. How much was that? Do you know? Do you have that number right off the top of your head?
It, it was about $330,000. I can check the actual contract. It was in that ballpark. It was over 300.
Okay, all right. Um, and then, so we pay for two employees, right?
Yes.
And how many employees do you have?
We have, at this time, we have eight employees. And so, yeah.
Okay, yeah, I, I know you're, you're the focus of, of quite a few discussions or not you, not you necessarily, but community.
I'm the face of those discussions, yes. So, and the two employees, two FTE, um, is not enough even to staff our overnight, right? We have to have two staff, we're mandated to have two staff, one for every 15 guests. Um, and we are open eight to eight. And so that is three nights of two staff members. And so that is, that is not even half of our overnight staff. So we appreciate the county and we appreciate the, the grants and the money. Um, and we have a HUD grant to pay for two or three case managers to help people.